Good evening. Welcome to the January 3rd, 2011's regular city council meeting. We've just come out of closed session and Mr. Black, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Mayor, there's nothing to report and no final actions were taken. However, there will be a continuation of the closed session after regular business.
Very good, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall, Councilmember Shalong, Councilmember Ania,
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murray,
Here.
And Mayor Slert.
I'm here, thank you. And Ms. Westfall, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you. I'd like to extend a Happy New Year to my colleagues, to the city staff, and to the public. I hope it's a good, prosperous, and healthy New Year for all of us. And aren't we grateful for this Chamber of Commerce Sunshine Day today? So, to begin with here, we're going to have an acknowledgement. Is Chief? Is Donna present?
(Laughter).
Welcome. Please come on up. And Chief? Ms. Arnett has been with our city police department for probably what feels like a lifetime, and she's retiring. And so, at this point, this is an acknowledgement of her retirement and a presentation. So, Chief, please.
Donna Arnett has been with the Crescent City Police Department for 21 years. Throughout that time, she has been extremely dedicated, very loyal to the department, as well to the city. Every time I make the corner every morning to come to work, I can't tell you the relief that comes over me when I see her car parked in the parking lot, because it's a feeling that knowing, okay, everything's under control, Donna has everything running smoothly before I hit the back door. And it's such a nice feeling to have, being the chief of police, to have an employee such as Donna. Unfortunately, her 21 years wasn't fully with my seven years here. So, seven years as a police chief, I just wish I was here sooner if I had employees such as you who lived the entire time that I would be chief of police here. So, it's very important that she is publicly recognized for all her hard work and all her dedication. And I really do appreciate it, because you've made my job so much easier. So, therefore, you know you already got a plaque from the police department in regards to being an employee of the police department, but the city would like to also, along with you, give you an opportunity to see this as far as a donation from the city to show that your dedication.
Absolutely beautiful.
What was your job title? What were you?
A police record specialist.
I hope you did as well as you guys.
Well, she should. She should have. So, therefore, thank you.
So, very, very.
Thank you very much for everything.
Donna, I would offer that this is a momentous occasion, and thank you for your years of service and dedication to the city. And now, the Chief's got the tough task of trying to replace you.
(Inaudible).
And I'd like to offer any of the council, if you'd like to offer any comments, please do that.
Donna, I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with you in the two years that I was a reserve officer, and thank you for all your time.
Love it.
You've always been a great help to me whenever I've called up, so thank you very much, Donna. You'll be missed.
Twenty-one years is a very long time to work for anybody, but to work for a municipality in a department like a police department where stress levels can be high and low, and different officers coming and going, and training, and really did hold everything together. I miss having you answer the phone when I call. So, thank you for everything, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much. And Donna, I don't know you, but I wish you all my best wishes for retirement.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll move along to item number three here, the consent calendar, which is for the approval of the regular meeting minutes for December 6th, 2010, of the city council meeting. Item number four, approval of the warrant claims list for the period of December 7th through January 3rd, 2011. Item number five, approval of bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending December 4th, paid December 10th, 2010, and the period ending December 18th, paid December 22nd of 2010. And then, item six, to receive and file the November 2010 general ledger operating report.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move to item number eight, which is reports. And Mr. Butler will offer a report here. And for those of you that may have been away or not aware for some reason, Mr. Butler has offered his resignation to the council and the city to be departing us in about a month's period of time. And so, I thought it would be a good opportunity for him to offer his thoughts at this time so that you can hear from him directly as our city manager. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, for those that didn't catch the media coverage, I guess the week before Christmas, I did submit my resignation. I'm going to, I was thinking about taking a page from the Eli Napa playbook and reading my resignation letter, but I don't think I'm going to do that. I'm going to be around for another month, and we'll have plenty of time to, you know, say farewells and comment on, will it be exactly two years by the time that I leave, that I will have been here? Absolutely nothing negative about Crescent City, the community, or the organization at all has basically to do with the fact that I have a 92-year-old grandmother and a 74-year-old widowed mom down in Southern California that I have a lot of responsibilities for. And it's basically the difference between a 12-and-a-half-hour drive and a 4-and-a-half-hour drive. And a Patterson, where I'm going, City of Patterson, right on Interstate 5 corridor in Stanislaus County, puts me about 4-and-a-half hours away from not only those relatives, but also a lot of other connections that I have and that I feel disconnected from and have for the last couple of years. And this will give me an opportunity to, you know, to get reconnected and to hopefully fulfill the responsibilities that I think I have as the firstborn son of the Butler clan, which is only a clan of two sons. So, it really is family-driven more than anything else. But it is also an excellent professional opportunity in Patterson as well, and I appreciate their offer and look forward to getting started there. But I think for now, I'll not comment any further on the two years. I think we'll be having the farewell get-together toward the end of January, and we'll have a chance to kind of reflect over what we've accomplished over those two years and hopefully have that build some positive momentum for where Crescent City goes from here. So, I'll, and actually, what I'm going to present tonight on the project update will cover some of that.
Very good.
We wanted to kind of kick off the year by going over some of the major city projects. I'm going to ask the council to kind of help me make sure that I'm not forgetting anything on this list. For the public, back, yeah, Megan is grabbing one right now, back on that back podium, or that would be called, audiovisual area. I have prepared a list for the council of what I thought were the priority projects for calendar year 2011. It's not meant to be an exhaustive list of everything that the city is doing at all, but I'm thinking just for our own tracking throughout the year and also as we transition to an interim city manager, I wanted to make sure that we had a clear understanding between the staff and the council on what the key priority projects are. So, I listed them into, broke them up into three categories. The first would be city projects, and these are clearly projects that the city is responsible, is the responsible lead agency on. I then have a category that I call private projects that will have some city involvement or partnership. And I then have a category called regional projects that will have some city involvement or partnership. I think what I'll do is walk you through this list, and then I wanted to talk in detail today about the Front Street redesign and reconstruction, which we had some real good news on just before the holidays, and I think the council's aware of, but wanted to make sure the community is aware of as well. So, as I'm walking through these, let me know if I have missed anything that you want to have on this list, because this is going to become the, you know, the ongoing status update list throughout calendar year 2011. So, I've got Front Street redesign and construction under city projects. And by the way, these numbers are not meant to indicate priorities, so it's not like I'm saying the number one is necessarily more important than the next one. Number two is beachfront master plan and improvements. And I think for 2011, realistically, most of the year would be the planning process rather than the actual construction work on the improvements. Number three, downtown revitalization strategy, and I'm including in that tsunami landing. It's determining the future of tsunami landing and the structure itself. Shoreline RV park improvements, and we're including the long-awaited sign, Highway 101 sign, and the infrastructure work inside the park itself. Number five, ongoing street improvements. I want to make sure we don't lose the momentum. I think we've invested over $5 million in the last five years on street improvement work throughout the city, and I want to make sure that continues on. So, that could be something like a second micro-surfacing project. It could be, well, it will be the A Street, I call it the A Street Connector down by the Hampton Inn. One that I know the mayor has made it clear to me he wants to really move forward on is civic center and public safety facility planning. We got started on that during my first year here, kind of made a decision to hold off on it for the last year, but Mayor Slert has indicated he wants to really move forward on that. And then I threw in, as number seven, entry statements at key points in the city. So, landscaping and signs, and we've talked about that, you know, going beyond the, is it Kiwanis or Rotary that did the Welcome to Crescent City signs that are there now, and doing something more significant with landscaping and signs at the key entry points. Then down in private projects with some city involvement or partnership, Costa Norte Residential Development, Randy Boz condominium project, and these are all things, again, that the private sector is bringing forward, but that the city will have some involvement in reviewing or partnering on. The North Coast Marine Mammal Center expansion, and the lead on that, I think, is the Northwest, North Coast Marine Mammal Center Board of Directors, but the city has, for example, taken the lead in applying for a grant for that project. White House Repertory Theater building renovation, and we've had Joan Buehler before us several times in the last year talking about that. One I call new hospitality projects, that would be Hampton Inn Phase 2, and I call that Lighthouse Inn South, but it's the project that Hector Brown has talked about in the last few months to build a Lighthouse Inn comparable facility on the old ice plant Sports complex, some kind of a sports complex, recreational tourism, I call it Eric Taylor's Field of Dreams project. We ended up, we didn't get the first round of grant funding that we applied for, but there is a second, there's another chance to apply for those funds. So, we'll definitely be taking a shot again at the funds for that facility. And then I just had a broad category called affordable housing projects at various locations throughout the city. And, you know, the council, actually more officially, the redevelopment agency board authorized some funding for consultant services to start getting, moving on some of those smaller to moderate-sized affordable housing projects within the city so we can begin to put those low and moderate-income set-aside redevelopment funds to work. And then I threw in a few regional projects with some city involvement or partnership. These will be things that are not necessarily in the city limits, but are things that the city will be involved in partnering with other agencies. One is providing wastewater services to the Harbor Seafood Processing Facility. We've talked a lot about that lately. Continuing the discussions with Elk Valley Rancheria on utility services to their resort, destination resort development. Continuing support for the airport JPA and the terminal project. Continuing involvement with Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority, including the renewal of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, and that's coming up. I know we have a kickoff meeting for that. They call it SEDS, C-E-D-S, process, I think, next week sometime, and Bill Renfro is the lead on that, but the city is a key partner. And then working closely with the Harbor on the Trails pedestrian signage improvement project. They got about $700,000 in grant money to do a variety of planning and engineering for making the, well, linking up the trails and the harbor to our trails and making the whole Harbor facility more pedestrian-friendly. So, we want to be involved in that to the greatest extent possible. So, my question is, have I forgotten any important, in any of those three categories, any important projects that the council, that are on the council's list, that you see us moving forward on in 2011? Because I want to make sure that we get everything that you want us to consistently report to you on, that we get that on this list.
Council, do you recognize anything that was left off?
We had talked, I guess, two years ago about creating a theme for downtown to help with revitalization. Is that going to be part of this number three downtown revitalization strategy?
Yeah, that's a good point. I should have mentioned that in addition to tsunami landing, I'm talking about signs, streetscape, lighting, possibly the fancy sidewalk stamped concrete, a lot of the things that other downtowns have done to improve the look and create a theme for the downtown area. So, I'm lumping all of that into this number three.
Anything else?
My addition would be our redevelopment projects that we've discussed from the town hall meetings, and then also our low-income housing projects that we're working on.
Sure, yeah, I think I was including that under number six.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
I thought you were looking at that as the commercial, private.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think most of those would be led by private developers, but obviously the redevelopment agency is a partner in it.
Any others?
Kelly, were you talking for the RDA about the updates on our strategic plan? Yeah, that's what I was going to talk about, was updates on the strategic plan, how we're progressing with that.
Okay.
Mr. Ania?
Very good. I think it's fairly comprehensive, Mr. Butler, and I think it's a reflection of the town hall meetings and the direction that the council has offered over the past couple years, period of time, I would say, tenure here.
You know, I think also, just to add to it, I think that we've made it very clear that ongoing maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant and our water facilities is a priority so that we keep those pieces up to date.
I think we have that in our plan that we discussed when we met with our auditor. That'll be coming up.
That's true.
Very good, Mr. Butler.
Good, so that's kind of the overview of the big list, and I appreciate your input on that. So, that will become, you know, you'll see this document with updates on each of the items as we go throughout the year.
Great. I think it's a good document, a good working document to approach the interim city manager situation that will be forthcoming, and ultimately, the new city manager when that person is identified.
That's right. That's a good reason for doing it. And then I just wanted to pass along the good news that, again, the council's aware of. In fact, three members of the council actually sit on the local transportation commission board, and were able to vote on this. But on December 9th, Thursday, December 9th, we received the good news that the local transportation commission, Delnort LTC, approved our request for $275,000 in engineering and design funding for the Front Street project. So, that will be able to move forward now. I've attached to the document that was available for the public and for the council, the letter that we sent to Tamara Layton, and my thanks to Tamara Layton for kind of holding our hands through this process too, to make sure we did everything correctly, just requesting the funds, and they used this letter as part of their agenda item. So, the way it shakes out throughout the year is the requests for proposals will be distributed actually this week. We wanted to make, we had a new set of consultants that we wanted to make sure got involved in this RFP, so that will go out this week. The proposals are then due back to the city by March 1st. The consultant interviews are to be completed by April 1st. This is all 2011. The consultant is to be under contract to the city by May 1st, 2011. The preliminary design will be completed by August 1st, 2011. And there will be, by the way, some additional, I forget if we required one or two, but at least one more public workshop. We've had a couple of opportunities for the public to comment on the Front Street design already, and have actually had some really good input, but we'll give people at least one more time to weigh in on all the ideas. But preliminary design's done by August 1st, and then final design to be completed by November 1st, 2011. And again, this is the farthest that we've ever gotten, farther than we've ever gotten before on this project. So, and the money now, without any city funds being used, is there to pay for this work to be done, so.
That's very positive. As Mr. Butler indicated, we have been working on this for some time and trying to get it moved forward on the table, if you will, and it's, I think it's actually very believable, the timeline schedule that's proposed, and to think that basically, come November, we could be shovel-ready with the design and production of drawings for Front Street, which is kind of our main street for our community, and everybody seems to know the liabilities that the street currently has and has had for a long time, so it's a very big accomplishment.
Can we make sure that the town hall meeting process where we had the Front Street reconstruction public discussion, and we did the surveys of everybody that participated, could you make sure that those surveys are included as information to the person or company that actually wins the contract?
Sure.
Great, thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Butler. And now we have to receive a report from Mr. Michael Clark on the potential development of a Crescent City youth center.
Yes.
There he is.
That's me.
Michael.
Well, I'm back again.
Welcome.
Thank you. I did my report on, I went to Crescent Elk, I spent time with the kids, asked the kids what they want in a youth center, or what they want to bring to Crescent City. Well, I'll give you some handouts here. This is for me. A second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, in this circle here is some ideas of some, like, the poor will be involved, the lighthouse, the lighthouse community center, Boy Scouts, and the powerhouse. And these are who I went to and talked to, and I went to Butler, and Butler gave me a little project of going to the kids, asking, seeing what the kids want in Crescent City. So, I picked up a little, my results of the next page of the background, of the information that I did with the kids, is the local activities, they, you know, I'm not going to read all of them, because it's a lot, but this is some of the background information that I did with the schools about youth center. Mostly, they pick a youth center, so that's, that's what I mostly talked for, is like a youth center for the kids. Then the last survey from Crescent Elk is 175. I guess I was in the middle of testing that day, so. Then the high school was 223. I did all the health classes at the high school, and mostly, they, it all come up as a youth center, or like a YMCA, but I went to one in Grants Pass today to look at one, and almost, it was pretty interesting. Then the next page is, you know, some activities that we could offer the kids is first aid, CPR training, summer lessons, life call training, how to do powerpoints, how to speak in public, you know, some basic things that some of the kids out there don't know how to speak in public, and be opportunity if they could, you know. Giving back to the community is we could do community work service projects, you know, if we get things going. As like a little youth center here in Crescent City for the youth is we could give back to you guys, all back to communities, like doing, maintaining gardens, maintaining city parks, like going picking garbage up, you know, volunteering at the pool, they need volunteering in the summer, becoming involvement with Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, you know, having them more involved and out in the community and forest. More, if they have big public events, we will come and we'd have a big booth, you know, doing, you know, public events. So, that's some of it, some ideas too.
Very good.
Other ideas I have here, the ages, age 11 to 17, hours, you know, it's just some ideas that, you know, every two weeks, movies, social time, you know, some ideas that the kids did and I did too, that, you know, a lot of kids don't have much to do in this town anyways, and I think it'd be better if we had like a youth center or some center around here for kids to go to, to hang out, do homework, stuff like that. This is what a youth center, this is what the kids pick. This is what, you know, some basketball gym, you know, some basic thing that they want, but not like, you know, you know, if we do open one or, you know, and be, not like most of all this inside of it, this is just what the kids say on the papers, so this is what I put in there. Then on the bottom here is like a library for the kids, like at the school, like from Crescent Elk, they could walk over to youth center, they have like a library, a computer lab for them to do homework in, and they're safe, you know, and they're not going out in the community, getting in trouble, they could be at the youth center. And on the bottom here, director, city staff, you know, member, YMCA manager full-time, you know, youth counselors, two part-time volunteers means that we could get like the high school TPP workability program that they, the schools pay for their employees to work in different kinds of jobs, and that could save money too. But this is kind of ideas that I came up with too, so I promise the youth that, you know, I will give this information to you guys, and I talked to a lot of youth, went to the high school again, talked to the principal, talked to Janet Morehouse. talked to the principal, talked to Jan Morehouse. Jan Morehouse is on my side. She say we need any help, she'd be happy to help. The principal gives some ideas with the youth too. And mostly, you know, I'm asking about youth center, and I know we could make this happen. I know the county used to have a youth center, but it went down to the drain, but I got a feeling this, we do give one for the youth and be pretty, you know, bring people down from Brookings and, you know, bring more kids in the community. So...
Very well done, Michael. I would congratulate you on your energy and efforts put into this. And, I mean, a big part, the youth is actually proposing to give back to the city-
Yes.
-and participate. So, it's really a partnership, and that's, that's incredible, you know?
And...
It speaks volumes for the, for the youth of our community that want to get involved and participate.
Yeah, I got a lot of kids ready like in middle school, you know, this, I ask them, if we get a youth center in, would you guys come? Oh, yes, we will come. We will do this. We do events. And two is when we get things, hope we get things going, we have a, like a little council at the youth center that the kids come and talk to you guys about projects that, that's going on too. And like every time, every two weeks or every meeting, they come in here and give you reports on things that was going on in the youth center, doing stuff in the community, you know, giving back to the community, to show that community that, you know, if the parents have kids and they're at the youth center, they're doing something pretty good, you know, I mean, just trying to find things for the youth to do. So, you know, got skating, got bowling, got movies. So...
Very positive.
So, I'm just actioning you guys, you know, and, you know, I, I'm here for the youth. So, I'm like fighting for the youth, and I think it's time to get something in for the youth to do. So...
Well, I want to thank you. It started with me-
Yeah.
-about a year or so ago, and you've come a long way. Michael actually showed up at my work with a, pretty much a shoebox full of-
It's a new one too.
Oh, you have a plastic box now.
Yeah.
With about hundreds, hundreds of little pieces of paper that he'd went around to the kids in all the different schools and asked them, write down, you know, what your priorities are-
Ideas, you know.
-for our community. And he brought me these big stacks of paper, and I said, "Michael, go, go home and sort these all out and, you know, put it in some, into some sort of form"
Yes.
"-so that we can actually bring this to the council." So, you started on this a year ago, and I think that you have done a great job. I wish a lot of our kids had the energy and dedication that you've had for this project.
Well, and two, you know, if, you know, get things going too, I know I got kids out there just like me, you know, and, you know, a lot of kids like me don't know how to speak to you guys or how to speak in public, but it could happen, you know?
You're doing a good job of it. And I think you've heard me say that having a place that's safe for our kids is a priority for me personally as a councilperson. So, I hope that this council is able to partner with the community to bring something, not sure what it's going to look like, but something to our kids.
Yeah, and plus, I told the kids too, it's, you know, I'm on the side. So, you know, and all the time I'm walking down the streets or like jogging, they're stopping and say, "Hey, you know, what's going on about the youth center? You say you come back to me or come back to the school." And tell them, "Well, I'm waiting on, you know, I'm just waiting on my reports." I tell them, "It takes time."
Waiting for the city to win the lottery.
Oh, yeah. But, you know, I mean, it doesn't have to be like a youth center, you know? It could be just a place for the kids to go to, you know?
Well, we talked about in the, not the Ford Foundation, but the, the community initiatives that's being led by Geneva Wiki, instead of, you know, if we can't afford to build an actual teen center, you know, the Duraunia Teen Center, to have maybe smaller versions of that in different parts, different neighborhoods throughout the city.
Yeah, and two, that's, you know, I've been going out to other buildings, empty buildings in the city and looking, you know, like, trying to get the closest, you know, just idea of the closest building next to a park, you know, like the pool, and some other ideas that is more safer for the kids to go to, not like, like building a, a building, but like maybe just like, you know, a building like next to a park, you know, a small little building that the kids could go to.
Places where kids congregate anyway.
Uh-huh, yes. And have the building, big building that costs hundreds and thousands, you know, but, you know, I think it'd be better, like I've been looking out, you know, on papers of the different kind of buildings, you know, that, you know, they want a dog. I was thinking, "Oh, too dangerous, next to highway." You know, you know, I've been looking at the different kind of things that, you know, we would have to build a youth center, like a big building. We just rent a building and just pick piece by piece in, and just draw the kids in, and more kids we have, you know, you know, so like it'd be, like, like the plan, I know wasn't here, like having, you know, like middle school on Thursday, Friday, then having high school on, you know, Saturday, Sunday, then mix up two, you know, together, but have like a, the guy that deal with the guys and the girls do with the girls, you know, you know, so, so the girls could do their own little project, and the boys could do their own little projects, then have them high school, middle school meeting together.
Yeah. And Michael and I were on the youth development coalition when S.H. Cowell first came here, and that was like three years ago.
Yes.
Yeah, so, and we were talking about that. So...
Yes. And I've been traveling like Uva City. I went down to Uva City for two weeks, and I looked at a youth center down there, and it's a pretty small youth center, but, you know, it's, you know, it's going pretty well, and the YMCA is, you know, I, I know they have big, more money down there, but I know we could do something up here, you know, like a small-
In the, in the lighthouse, the youth center has just recently opened in December-
Yes.
-which is a very good asset for the larger community.
Yes.
Anna, do you have anything else?
Yeah, with all the empty buildings here, surely, something can be put together between the Ford Foundation, other foundations, to get something off the ground. And in the meantime, maybe a house just to start it, and then as a first step, and then keep going up from there.
Yeah, it, it, you know, it, like, I tell most kids that, you know, if we get a youth center starts, it takes a while to build up, you know, things inside, you know, and I tell them that more people, more kids come in, you know, and, you know, maybe get grants and stuff like that, you know, to show that people out there say, "Hey, you know, your kids are coming here," you know, we could get grants for it, or, you know, to be more involved in the community. So, because I know a lot, you know, I've been to the bowling alley a lot, see a lot of kids are bowling, some of them just hanging out, you know, I mean, you know.
Thank you.
I'm glad, I'm glad Ms. Morehouse is interested.
Mr. New, you have anything?
No.
Thank you. So, Mr. Butler, it looks like we need to add another item to the city projects list.
That's true.
The teen center, whatever form that ends up evolving into.
Eric Taylor's.
Yeah, yeah, that could be another Taylor.
Okay, at this time, we'll have a public comment period, and any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate acts and action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone, microphone are out of order and will not appear as part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name, and with, if you're with the city or the county resident, and for the record, and then public comment period is limited to three minutes. Public comment, please. Mr. Feller.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the hat I wear today is as of the district representative for Senator Doug Lamotha. He has graciously appointed me as a part-time employee of the senate to be your representative in this area, representing him. He made that commitment to represent you, to be here often, and to represent you well in his election campaign, and to help you with an overbearing government and keeping your taxes low. In fact, he made the promise never to raise your taxes. He has three offices, Oroville, Placer County, Placer and Reading. There are six of us district representatives, plus the district representative. My specialties will be fishing, harbors, and development. Although, that'd be my lead on the, on the staff. I'll take care of those issues primarily, and to represent you as well as possible, and to answer your questions, and to take care of all of our governments and the constituency. We will be opening the satellite office here in town. We have a lead on one, but until I get the other three offices all squared away, we can't get the senate staffers, the support staff up here, although they're fighting to come up here with us. They want the trip. Soon as those other three offices are up and running, then we'll get our satellite office up and running, and then we'll have, you know, hopefully Doug will be up here for ribbon cutting. Any questions?
That's wonderful. I'm thrilled that we were going to have the direct representation. I think that might be a first for our community.
It is a first for a senator to have any kind of an office in Del Norte County.
Very good. So, I would say take advantage and abuse Scott as the representative to have a direct connection with our state senator.
Can we get that in writing?
As you know, Doug has been up here. He made 11 visits to our county in his campaigning over the two-year period. So, I don't know if we'll get him that often, but we will get him up here fairly often. He's made that commitment.
He was amazing. We very much appreciated having his presence, whether you are a Democrat or Republican. He's very easy to speak to. He cares about rural issues, and, you know, he's a farmer, so he understands rural issues and agricultural issues. And whether you agree with him or not, he would listen, and I appreciated that very much.
He has started a contest. It'll end the 10th of January. It's the finest, stupidest law on the book, and he'll propose a law to get rid of the stupid law or laws. The prize will be lunch with the senator and a flag that's flown over the Capitol. So, if you have some dumb laws, there have been some real interesting proposals, I'd be happy to carry that for you to him.
Well, and I know that in, in speaking with you, that you're working with him on some legislation that would be very pertinent to this community and to the entire state.
Till that comes back up out of, out of the Capitol staff. I can't comment on it yet.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a nomination for the stupidest law, requiring everyone to put sprinklers in when they redo their laws.
In Crescent City.
In Del Norte County.
The rumor floated on that with the new uniform building code that took effect as of January first is that the backlash hasn't started yet, and we'll just have to wait and see how that one plays out. But, yeah, that's, that's in the categories that have been nominated, in the, in the non-fire areas, in some of the eastern areas-
Right.
-San Diego, Orange, LA counties.
Another law that doesn't apply to us.
Yeah.
Thanks so much, Scott. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Bob Sykes, a local physician here, retired. I've lived in Crescent City for about 10 years now. I worked for two years in the Pelican Bay system before I retired. We stayed here because we liked the city, but the city has a problem with its economy. And let me give you this to pass on.
Please.
Yeah, I can't hear you, sir.
Is that better?
Yes.
That is.
Okay. Thank you. I just passed out an article that I think might help the economy. It's called Sailboat Racing: An Economic Juggernaut. The article is by Dr. Michael Sear. Now, he works at the Pelican Bay State Prison. He's a full-time physician there. And this city is unique. We have a very nice harbor. We have two lighthouses here. Most places don't have two lighthouses. Dr. Sear's article there feels it's a very good place to have sailboat racing. Now, sailboats are a luxury. If you have a sailboat, you've got some money also. If you have sailboat racing here, people will spend money here. It'll improve the economy. I think it's worth a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I would just offer that I, we just missed the president of the Harbor Commission, Mr. Feller, who was here. That'd be a good person for you to know, doctor. But the idea of sailing, I mean, I'm sure it takes some coordination. I don't know what the best times of the year are here. We get a lot of wind in May, and we get a lot of fog in the summer, and so, but coordinating and working with the Chamber of Commerce and/or the Harbor District, it sounds like a very positive thing that could be something that we could become known for. Or, or maybe there's a circuit where they start at Seattle and move down the coast from one city to a next. So, I appreciate that positive kind of input. Thank you.
And we do have a yacht club here. Little as it is.
Is there any other public comment? Mr. Barrett, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jim Barrett. I live in, in the city. And congratulations, Kelly and Richard. And I'd like to do something that's, that's actually meant to support you, although maybe part of it won't sound like that. But we got a new governor today, and he made a nice speech, and he's already talking about sacrifice and understanding, and he's using this phrase, return control to local areas, which pretty much means we're going to get dumped on, I imagine, and we're not going to get a lot of funding to go with the new requirements. But the point is, there, there are real troubles in Sacramento, and this, the weekend's talk shows were kind of staggering this last weekend because they're now all worried about, the opinion makers are worried about the euro. They're actually thinking that the euro might completely collapse. They might actually shut that down, revert to individual countries' monies, which I don't really know myself what difference that makes to you or to me, but I never heard that before, and it, they think it's catastrophic. The Tea Party, of course, wants to freeze the debt limit, which they say is also catastrophic. Again, I would have thought it'd make the dollar stronger and safer, but they think, no, it'll, it'll just put us over the cliff. But the point is that no matter how you figure it, the people in this country and in this city are looking at monetary concerns that I think we're better off if we face, you know, before they clobber us. And there are things you can do, I think, and one of them is to ask, who is it that gets to make this, this argument against the policy you're probably gonna, the decision you're probably going to make tonight? And who, who do you have recommending to you that you do not increase the wages of the laborers in the city? I mean, is there really anyone? Does the Tifa police ever say, "No, my officers make enough money. No, I have enough officers." Does, you know, the public works, works department ever say, "No, we're, we're getting pretty good pay as it is. There's a lot of unemployment. You can just skip us this time around." My general thinking is, there's no one. I, I would imagine that there's really absolutely no one who suggests to you, you ought not to raise wages right now. But I want to try to at least get away with saying to you, there's justifiable reason to worry about your fiscal position. There's justifiable reason to say, your workers are not starving. They're not grotesquely underpaid. No one's below the poverty level, and I, I think you're, you're not an embarrassing city in terms of your pay. And so, I would like to suggest to you that you consider not giving out these pay raises, that you explain to them that if, in a world where you had magic wands, they would probably get a 10%, 15%, 20% pay cut, because this is the world that's coming at us. Now, I know there's laws that wouldn't allow such a thing. I understand there's unions, and I don't even think you're going to pass on this, this increase. I think you'll just flop over and give it to them. But I really do want you to ask, whoever argues for you, says to you, "You should control your money better, cut your wages, watch your wages," at least ask people to do more for less. Bill Clinton got away with asking, saying this, others have, and there's a reason for you to be fiscally responsible. So, that's what I came here for. Good luck, and please try to remember that when you do increase the debt, under any rationale whatsoever, there's a really small number of people that are on the line for that. And I think you are the only ones to watch our money. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Morrison.
Morrison from County, and I, I want to talk on, along that same vein of-
Can I actually pull the mic down to you? There you go.
Okay. Along that same vein of, of being physically responsible. And as you know, I went to the Harbor Commission meeting, and I was just really excited to go because of knowing that I paid $300 for dirt that had been enhanced with fish guts, excuse me. And, and I heard that we had to extend the wastewater treatment plant because we needed to put the fish remains, the byproducts from the fish, through the wastewater- to put the fish remains, the byproducts from the fish, through the wastewater treatment plant. And I thought, wait a minute, Hambro's making a big business out of this, I just paid 300 bucks for a whole truckload of dirt that's enhanced with this, there's money, we can do that, that's a job, that's another plant for Crescent City. And so I went and talked, and they said, no, no, it's the water. We've got to have a lot, a lot of water to do this. And I thought, the water? Okay, right. So, and then I flashback on Mr. Young's comment to the casinos, because they want to enlarge the casino and use the wastewater treatment plant. And he was talking about, in two paragraphs, he says, no problem, Smith River, lots of water, poop, got a new wastewater treatment plant, we'll put it through there. And if there's not enough room, it would be $10,000 for each new unit that we would have to create to hook up to. And I thought, $10,000 for each new unit, geez. And then I found that there was a union that wrote this, and this is pretty incredible, to his two paragraphs, they wrote a 30, 30 some odd page rebuttal saying, no, no, there's more, much more to consider. And in, in light of what he was talking about, who do you look to for answers? If you have not read this, I would really suggest you read this. It's, it's entitled Comments of Local 751 from May 11th, 2010. And this is from page 23. And there, he's talking about negative impact, that they're saying, yes, there will be a huge negative impact on the resources and the money that will need to be spent. So, and then the third thing is, I was concerned about you, Mr. Mayor Slert, and the conflict of interest of, of your business, making a bid on the harbor, doesn't look right to me. It doesn't feel right, because they're going to be coming to the city wanting money from you, and you have to, to bid on that.
Thank you.
Okay. That's my three minutes.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing done, we'll close public comment and move into continuing business. Item number nine on the agenda, consider an approved payment 43 for wall and construction and a payment invoice number 8132 for Stover Engineering regarding wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Beller?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and members of the council, this is, again, we're winding down, probably have maybe two or three more of these left. Numbers are getting smaller. It's basically just the monthly payments that have come in and that we're processing now for both wall and construction and Stover on the wastewater treatment plant project. There is one change this month, and that is that the Stover Engineering component is now at a total that is somewhat over the current budget for those services. And so we have Ward Stover here with us this evening to answer any questions you may have regarding that. And we also have Mr. Barnes to address any questions you may have on either the engineering or the construction component. So with that, we would recommend the approval, and as I say, both those gentlemen are here tonight if you have any questions.
Counsel, would you prefer to hear from Mr. Stover or Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Stover, I guess.
Before you tonight is our latest invoice. We've been tracking the costs for quite some time now, and as you've seen in the past, your Public Works Director, instead of prematurely quote unquote asking for additional funds, he likes to get it down to where, where we know we're going to be needing some more. And I have to apologize, our intent was to, to get a contract amendment before you, before we got into a negative territory. But because of the, the way the timing was for the, for the month of December, we had to have invoices turned in early so the staff reports and so forth can get put together, and we didn't have time to present to you where we're headed. But I'm sure that's the question that's, that's being asked. So what I did was after talking to the Public Works Director, there's basically three questions that I think you were going to ask, so I came prepared to answer those tonight. The first question is, is, is why are we now out of budget? And the, the quick answer is, is that we've, we have some extra time that we've put into this project, and there have been some construction changes over time involving some additional design and permitting. That extra time and those construction changes and so forth have been basically presented to you on a monthly basis when you, when you review your, your budget summary. So how do we get here to where we're at today? Well, in September 2009 was Amendment 11 that, that this council considered. And the assumptions that were put into that amendment were that we were going to, we thought we were going to be completed in around May 2010, complete with construction, not completed with closing out paperwork. Since that time, there's, there have been changes, you've, you've seen them in the form of change orders that have extended the time of the contract, and so we have some, some additional time. So the current completion date that's approved by this council is January 2011. And so basically, there's an eight, eight-month change in time there, that we've had extra staff onboard watching the project as well as, as dealing with permits and, and some design changes. What I'm proud, excuse me, what I'm proud to say is, is that we made the assumption that we'd be done in, in May, we were able to basically chug along for about five more months before we ran out of budget. I think that's where your Public Works Director wanted to see is, how far could we go? So then the next question is, where are we going? Well, obviously, we're over budget for the month of November. I don't have all my numbers in yet for December, I'm waiting for the, for the sub consultants to get their, their December invoices in. We're going to be somewhere around $50,000.
For December?
For December. Doing the as-built, we have over 350 sheets that, that need little changes made to them. And we just made a rough estimate of an hour per sheet for drafting, and then, and a half an hour per sheet coordination with the construction manager to make sure they're accurate. There was a previous city council member that was very concerned that the as-built correctly reflected what was out in the field. And we had originally budgeted $68,000 in our initial estimate that we started with, what, five years ago, four years ago? And we think we're going to be in the range of $45,000 to $60,000. The next two months of having, having the inspector onboard, he's actually ratcheted back his work. I mean, there's still work that needs to be done, but he was putting in 50 to 55 hours a week, and now he's, he's at 40 hours or less. So he's, he's working at about 60 to 80% of, of what we were doing when we were at the height of, of the work here. And then we're still working with your staff, working with the regional board to get your, your MPDS permit and, and the Title 22 permit, threw in $5,000 there. So we've got a range of $180,000 to $200,000. So I will be coming back to you with the contract amendment for that amount, but you want, needed to know where we're headed, so that's kind of where we're headed.
Now, Ward, when you say $150,000 to $200,000, is that all out, including the...
November and December.
$28,000 for November and the $50,000 for...
Yes, yes, I included, included the $27,000 for November, $50,000 for December, as-built $45,000 to $60,000, ongoing inspection. We, even though the plant is operating, we still have a laundry list of punch list items that we're going through on a daily basis. There are, there's actually items that are failing that we're having to get replaced. The manufacturers and the contractors responsible for backing that stuff up. So we've been helping the city out with that. And then, again, like I said, we're, we're working on helping with your final permit. So, so there's, there's still things going on for the next couple of months. So we see ourselves kind of wrapping up in March, April at the latest. And when I say wrapping up, wrapping up our paperwork, we're hoping to get the contractor done by the end of January under his contract.
Okay. Counsel, we have questions or clarifications?
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
This was for...
I've had several people say that it looks to them like you're double and triple dipping, and I would like to know, Mr. Mayor, how we should address this issue?
Well, okay, I, you know, I guess if somebody's going to make a suggestion or allegation like that, I'd like to have something to substantiate it. What I think I was hearing here, a couple of things. Regarding the $42.5 million SRF loan, which was the, the whole enchilada, if you will, the state allocates a certain percentage for the job that you have been performing, which is construction administration?
That's correct.
Throughout the project. And I can't remember offhand what the state, is it 10%?
Well, it's, it's a, it's a running, it's a, it's, it's not quite 10%, but you actually have a real number, and it's a little over $3.3 million.
Okay, so, so the state revolving fund allocates a certain portion of the financing for the project based on the state standards, and that is the $3.3 million, whatever that percentage works out to.
Right.
Something short of 10%. And so what Mr. Barnes did as Public Works Director, early on on the project, is, is he knew that there was going to be $3.3 million allocated. Instead of putting all that money on the table and saying, okay, here's that chunk of money for construction administration, he said, here's $2 million, and that's what you have to work with. So he was actually trying to be optimistic and not put all the money on the table at the outset, but instead release it as it needed to be released, hopeful of saving it if possible. Is that correctly stated?
Correct.
So my understanding is that now we are, the, the, the additional fees that you're asking for are additional relative to the first $2 million that was allocated of the $3.3 million. And now you're trying to get the work finished, and the work finished actually is identified on your invoice at the bottom, where it identifies 20 line items of change orders that has come before the council over some period of time. 20 line items, change orders, and, and they're all very specifically spelled out, and as I recall, each of those change orders came with backing, supporting material. So it's not that it needs to be fabricated or created, there is actually paperwork in the, documented currently regarding those change orders.
Yeah, what we do is, we submit a, a monthly invoice that's very detailed, it's about 10 pages long, and every, everything that is done by our staff is, is clearly identified. What you see on a monthly basis is just this cover sheet, from what I understand. So what we did for simplicity is, with the cover sheet, when, when your staff asks us to do something, and we point out, that's beyond what we were originally contracted to do, but it was something that needed to be done to keep the ball going, the agreement that we've had, and this is how we handled Amendment 11 as well, is we listed items that were not in our, in our original scope of work, but you've asked us to do it. And so we turn that into your, into your staff, Jim reviews our, our detailed invoice, makes sure that, that what we're claiming is correct, that we're, we're not going off on a tangent, and then he approves it and submits this to you. So what we do is, is we just try to show these as, as a reminder of what we've been asked in addition, and this is exactly how we dealt with Amendment 11 as well. You received, you received this, and it had a listing, and then once we, once we started Amendment 11, this was all blank on the bottom again. And as you received invoices from there on out, as we did additional stuff, we started putting more things on the list. So where we're at is towards the end of the project, and, and so that's where we're at today.
Okay, so do I, do I understand that with the $150,000 to $200,000 is you're assessing it will take to finish the work, which is associated to the extension of the contract from May, when it was supposed to have been completed, to now January of 2011?
Saying April.
That it will still fall within the $3.3 million of the state revolving fund allocation?
No.
Is that true?
That's, that's where it looks like we're headed right now.
Well, the way I see it, Ward, correct me if I'm wrong, your invoices show you now at 3.135?
That's correct.
Okay.
So 3.3 minus 3.1 is going to get you about $200,000.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
So, so that's, that's the difference between, between the two.
And, and part of the additional services includes the preparation of the as-built construction drawings so that there's a record document for the future for operations and maintenance, when the general contractor and you all are gone, that they will have a set of drawings that will represent what was built.
That's, that's correct. What, what we have right now, the contractor was required to provide us, the city, basically with marked up drawings. So they've marked them up in red and blue, they, there was a color scheme they had to use, but then there was also, there was also submissions for, for changes in the rerouting of, of the wiring. A lot of that was, a lot of that was at the discretion of the, of the electrical contractors. So now we have to, we can, we can hand the city a stack of notes, or we can convert them and, and update, date the drawings where they're called record drawings.
So, so when this scope of work is done with your final construction administration and the as-built drawings, the project will still be delivered on budget or under budget?
Based on, on my forecast right now, yes.
Okay. And, and, and it's also true that even with this additional change order that you're bringing before us, that it will not affect the sewer rate payers at all?
It's my understanding, if, if the, if the loan amount was used in, in your, your rate study, I wasn't privy to that, maybe Eric can better answer that question than I can. But, but I believe the full, the full loan amount was, was considered with the rate study.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to correct one thing, and Bob, you can back me up on this if I'm correct. The loan is not 42.5 million, it's 43.8 million, isn't that correct? Or Ken?
I don't have that document in front of me, but...
Yeah, that's the loan amount, but that doesn't mean that's how much we're borrowing.
That's what we were approved for.
Well, that's what the rate payers are on the, the, the rate payers are on the hook for, correct? 43.8 million?
If we draw that amount down, if we actually take that amount down.
Secondly, Mr. Stover, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have emailed correspondents going back and forth regarding your 20 additional items that you charged for at client request to date. And when I asked you if you had a way to track these, you said that you did not have a program that was used to track the hours and time and amounts, so I wanted to know how you came up with the figures?
Okay. The question you asked is if there was a way for us to track it. There's no way for, the program that we use does not, we can't break it up by task. So these 20 items down below, we can't, we can't break them up that way. But when we turn an invoice in, and there is a new item that shows... But when we turn an invoice in, and there is a new item that shows up on this list, Mr. Barnes reviews that and sees what we did, and determines if that was an appropriate amount of time that we worked on or not. I mean, we can go back and go through it all. The invoices are detailed enough. If you wanted to find out exactly how much money was spent on each individual item, we can do that. We don't have a button that we can push to make that happen. But we can do that if we had to. But on a month-to-month basis, your staff reviews our invoices, and we receive questions early on. And once we got, when I say early on, early on in our invoicing, once we got our invoicing format down to your staff satisfaction, we've been pretty good from here on out.
You just don't have a specific software program to do that?
That's correct. I mean, some very sophisticated billing software. If your staff called and asked me to do this item, we'd open another task line item, and you can do that. But my software doesn't do that. But we provide very detailed monthly invoices on a timely basis that are reviewed by your staff.
Ms. Long?
Two quick questions. You originally said that you had estimated sixty-eight thousand for the as-bills, and you're thinking you're going to be at forty-five to sixty?
That's correct. At the beginning of the project, we had to put a line item in, and we've been carrying sixty-eight thousand dollars all the way through. Well, now we've got the stack as-bills. We've gone through them, and we think we can do it a little bit less than that.
So my question was, was the sixty-eight thousand originally in what is now the three point one million? Or is the hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand have an additional? Is that forty-five to sixty thousand an additional amount that you're gonna bill?
That's gonna be in addition. Basically, we're out of money. And so, what we've done on these extra items has burned up the money. And so, when I say forty-five to sixty thousand, that's gonna be the new money added on in the end. And that's how we dealt with Amendment eleven as well. We didn't spend a lot of time dwelling on the past, because you looked at it on a monthly basis. It was, okay, where do we think we need to, where do we think we're going?
And then the other thing was, you said there were some items failing, and that the manufacturers were replacing those, but it's taken a new additional time to handle that transaction?
Yes.
Do they pay for the administrative costs as well?
Not upfront, but that's typically what we do, is we sit down with the contractor at the end. And if there are any issues that they bring up, we bring up our numbers, and we tend to get that worked out. If it's the desire of the board, we can be, we can go a little harder on them, which we can. It's just something that you might wanna talk to your Public Works Director about on how he wants to press that.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor?
I don't have any questions, just a comment. It's a massive project, and thank you for keeping it on track.
Well, if you ever see Mel Jennings around, he's the one that you're really indebted to, and I'm indebted to. He has kept this project on track, and he's been an asset also, in my opinion, to the contractor. So you've got a good project because of him, and I just happen to be lucky to have him as the employee.
Ms. Murray?
No, thanks a lot, Ward.
Thank you, Ward.
Thank you.
So we'll open it up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak to the issues?
My name's Jim Barrett, and I would admit it, admit right off the bat, I haven't bothered to look at any of the details in these twenty items he's talking about. But I have paid attention to you, and I don't think you've ever said no to the man ever. He comes in and says he wants more money for this or that or whatever, and you just keep apologizing for him. You make a better case for his bills than he does. And it seems like it sort of should be the other way around. I don't really know if there's anything illegitimate or legitimate. I just don't know anything about it. But I really get tired of seeing you guys apologize for him. Let him justify us over expense. Or, I mean, that's his job, I would imagine. I suppose I could even be wrong about that. But I don't think you need to apologize for whatever extra expense he's giving you.
Thank you. Ms. Morrison?
Vegan, yeah. Change order, that implies that there was an order in the beginning. And what I'd like, I feel the same way that Mr. Barrett feels, that I come in here and you guys... I had rental properties, I've had businesses before, and anytime I put in invoice for more money, people wanna know what the hell I did with it, or how come, da-da-da-da. And I was responsible for it. Nobody asked him any questions about anything. So what I'd like to see is, is there any way you could produce the order? And he comes in and he says, we gotta change the order. We're gonna do this, and it's gonna cost that. Just something in black and white so people can see it. Because ultimately, it's the city that's gonna be, the citizens that are gonna be paying this. And I don't know if you've seen how many people are being foreclosed on. That's the part that makes me ill, absolutely ill, is how many people have lost their homes, and probably over this deal. He's making a lot of money, a lot of people are losing their homes.
Thank you. I think Mr. Stover did make it clear that he has a process that he has to submit for the cost exchange...
Sir, you're the boss, you hired him. That's what Mr. Barrett was just saying, I believe. It's why are you apologizing for him? He made it clear. What is your position?
We are not apologizing for him.
What is our position on when we hire contractors?
I think we're trying to clarify that for you.
I don't need you to clarify. What is our position? We're hiring him to do work for us. He's coming, he says he needs more money. He needs millions of dollars more.
No, that's not what he said.
Forty times, he's coming here for more money.
His work is checked by our Public Works Director.
The one that was in the grand jury thing, yeah, don't talk to me, Mr. Richard.
We do.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
I made my case a hundred percent.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, thank you. Back to the council for discussion, further discussion?
I appreciate your comments, Mayor Slert, regarding how the process works. And for the record, I know for a fact that none of us made any apologies. So I have implicit confidence in Mr. Stover's integrity once again.
And there is an oversight, a check and balances, and that is Mr. Barnes and the Public Works Department. And then ultimately, the city manager, Mr. Butler. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor, this requires a four-fifths vote.
Pardon me?
This requires a four-fifths vote.
Oh. I would like to actually see a change order designed.
And...
I think this council made it very clear that we were no longer going to approve expenses without the change order first. We made that very clear to Mr. Barnes about a year and a half ago. So in order to keep up with that, I think it's very important that we have that change order before us.
Doesn't this actually represent the change order? It's just on a monthly basis?
No.
So you wanna see something for the...
The change order actually would represent the job that we're paying him for that goes above and beyond the contract amount. We don't have that, we just have an invoice amount.
I think, may I?
Please.
The, I think the change order may not be the correct terminology. I do think you need a contract amendment. And ideally, there's a portion of this invoice that is for charges within the existing contract. There's a portion that is outside. I think to do it properly and legally, you should have the contract amendment, which you could do at your next meeting. And you could authorize that portion that's outside the contract at your next meeting. So I don't wanna, I hate to impose any bureaucratic delay, but that's the way it's supposed to happen.
It is. It is.
Thank you. Great. So, Mr. Stover and Mr. Barnes, can you come back to us with an amended contract that reflects the adds and/or deletions?
But I would approve Payment forty-three representing the amount falling within the current contract amount, with the addition to be approved with the actual contract amendment.
Okay, so you have a motion?
Second.
Okay, you have a motion as a second. Will you pull a vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Inan?
Yes.
Councilmember Shlong?
Yes.
Councilmember Westphal?
No.
Mayor Protam Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So the motion carries four to one. Okay. Moving to item number ten, new business, we'll consider and adopt Resolution twenty-eleven-oh-one entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of Crescent City and the Crescent City Employees Association for the period of July one, two thousand and ten, through June thirty, two thousand and twelve. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor Slert. Mayor, members of the council, tonight you have before you the final agreement that has been reached between the city and the Crescent City Employees Association. Just for the public's edification, the city has four represented employee groups, the Crescent City Management Employees Association, the Clerical Employees of Crescent City, Crescent City Police Officers Association, and then this Crescent City Employees Association. We negotiated last year a two-year agreement with the Police Officers Association. During this current budget cycle, we have negotiated three agreements with the other three groups, and this represents the last of the groups to come to agreement with us during this negotiating cycle. We are recommending approval of the agreement before you this evening. There are some details in the staff report about the basics. There were some things that would be considered concessions on the part of the employees that will actually be cost savings to the city. And there were some things that were negotiated that would be costs to the city, including a two percent cost of living adjustment for each of the two years, and an increase in the flexible benefit health plan for each of the two years. But I think it's important to point out that there were, really in all three of the agreements that we negotiated in this cycle, there were concessions made on the part of the groups that will actually result in savings to the city, as well as some things that will be costs to the city. And that doesn't get covered a lot in the media coverage or some of the comments made by the public. And the significant one on this group is some changes in the way that overtime is calculated, that could literally save, you know, tens of thousands of dollars each year, and that the employee group agreed to in exchange for some things that they wanted. So we're recommending approval of the agreement. I would say, just in response to Mr. Barrett's comments, and comments that we hear a lot from the public, Ken McDonald and I wouldn't come before you tonight with these agreements if we didn't think that the city was able to follow through on the commitments that are made in terms of the cost of living increases, or some of the other increases that are included. And we've told all four of the groups during this round of negotiations that there are no guarantees in the world we're living in now, and we're having to look very carefully at our revenue trends, our expenditures, obviously, the specter of what's happening from Sacramento and how that will impact us. So there may come a time when we go back to all of these groups and the management employees and say, you know, the resources just aren't here to continue the compensation at this level, and we need to have a healthy dialogue about how we bring our costs down. So we are certainly aware of that, but we feel, we're aware of that potential down the road. But we feel that for this current budget cycle, this is a responsible proposal. And I think I pointed this out with the last round that we approved, but the budget already included an estimated settlement cost with this group. So this is not a new cost that gets thrown onto the approved budget. There was already an estimated settlement, which we believe this agreement's before you tonight falls within. So it's, you know, it's all factored into the budget that got approved. So with that, I'll conclude my report. We're here to answer any questions. Is Mr. McDonald still back there? Thanks again to the negotiating team. On the management side, it's primarily support from Ken, and then Laura Haven and myself. Also, Kim Smith from the Crescent City Employees Association. I think of who there, it's pretty much, Kim was the lead on most of the negotiations. They've made a decision, by the way, to end their association with the operating engineers local out of Reading. So they will, I'm not gonna do any commentary on whether that's good or bad. I'm just announcing that, that they have decided to represent themselves, as do the clerical employees and the management employees group. So we won't have that middleman in future negotiations.
Mr. Butler, this represents twenty-eight full-time employees.
Thank you, I left that on my report. This is the largest of our groups, and it's, depending on how many vacancies we have at any given time, it's twenty-eight to thirty full-time employees, and a wide range of employees. Everything from the employees that are over at the lab, wastewater treatment plant lab, to the meter-reader employees, to, of course, the bulk of them are folks that work in the field from the Public Works Department. So it's a wide range.
Mayor Slert, may I ask?
Please.
Rod, could you, for our audience and others, for, could you differentiate between a COLA and a RACE?
Yeah, a COLA, that's an acronym for Cost of Living Adjustment. Some people would say Cost of Living Allowance. And that is an increase in the base wage to reflect cost, increase in basic cost of living expenses. And a merit raise, or a merit increase, is hopefully attached to performance as part of a performance evaluation. So in most local government organizations, your position has a range, a salary range. And you may start at forty thousand and top out at sixty thousand dollars a year. And you may have anywhere from five to twenty steps within that range. And a merit raise would be a move from maybe step one to step two, based on your performance during the course of the year. A cost of living adjustment is an increase in the entire range of that position to, the idea being to keep up with raises in the cost of living, increases in the cost of living for basic goods and services over time.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Shalom?
I just wanted to say that this, when we talk about us actually having someone advising us on our finances, this process actually took this council and the management team four to six months before we reached an agreement. Because we did try to look after our finances and do what was not only best for the city, but what, you know, but also to recognize that we have valuable employees. Those employees on the step one phase make between eleven and nineteen dollars an hour. So they're not making seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year. They actually have a labor negotiator, a professional negotiator that works for them. We couldn't just sit down and talk to those employees. We always had to go through their professional negotiator. So it's not an easy process. We did, we not only are giving a two percent cost of living adjustment and some other things, but we also took some things away. So I feel like it was a give and take on both sides. And when I first started on the council, if I remember correctly, our employees were getting a five percent cost of living adjustment in there every year. And now we're giving a two percent. So this council has looked after its finances, and at the same time, we have very, very good employees. And we know that making a living at eleven bucks an hour isn't a huge amount of money. So we do recognize that they work hard for what they are paid for.
Ms. Westphal?
Yes, thank you. Since I last heard, we were still at sixty-three percent at low or below poverty level for our constituents. And we have a number of seniors that didn't get a cost of living increase. And so this is something that I feel strongly about that divides the city. Instead of all of us... Instead of all of us pulling together, we're divided, because here we have the employees of the city, supported by our constituent base, uh, getting an increase. Bottom line, with all the pluses and minuses, it's an increase. Isn't that correct, Ken McDonald? Or, Mr. Butler?
Yes, it, it is a net increase in cost.
It is a net increase. So I don't feel good about this whole thing when the majority of our, our population are going through very dire economic circumstances. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Enya? Ms. Murray?
No, I just, uh, wanted everyone to understand the difference, uh, because I think it was, uh, kind of confusing for some people, so. And I, I feel like that we should be, um, leaders in, uh, being a good employer in the community, not, um, not behind the ball.
Thank you. Um, I, I would offer, uh, I think it's important to, uh, reiterate what Mr. Butler had said, that we've just completed now in the last couple of years, period of time, negotiations with four union groups, and, and will actually be starting again, I think, next year?
2012.
Yeah, I believe it or not, probably in 90 days, uh, Police Officers Association processes back.
Right. So, uh, it's, it's an, an ongoing thing. Uh, this council is very cognizant of the reality of the real world. Uh, we live in it every day. The city, uh, lives and functions in that economic real world. Uh, but we've also tried to be, uh, consistent and fair in our negotiations from one group to another. Uh, and that's important regarding, uh, the ranks of the employees of the city. And, and I think it's also important to, to note, and Ms. Shlong touched on it, uh, in part, that, that our employees are, uh, basically across the board, lower paid than employees, um, in, in, uh, similar positions in other cities comparable to our city, uh, or larger. Uh, and so that's, I think, was a, a, an issue in our, uh, consideration. So I think it's, uh, uh, the negotiation that we've had, I think, has been a win-win for the city and for the employees, and, and has been consistent. So with that, I'll, is there a motion? Uh, is there a public comment?
I just have one quick one, and it's the overall view of how you appear to the public, or some parts of the public. And I read the newspaper where there was a loan default. You had $700,000 or something like that, and I believe it was this gentleman over here who said that, "Well, other people know, sometimes you just can't pay the loan." And yes, there's a whole segment of society out there that are being foreclosed on because they can't pay the loan. Um, which brings me to the point of, uh, uh, the city or the county, I'm not sure, it's gone back and forth in the newspaper, paying for the harbor. And could you not have loaned the harbor money, can you not borrow money instead of the citizens loaning it to them? And then the other thing is that on, in the raises, I noticed that the, for, the, the employees are the last ones to get the raise, but the department heads were approved of immediately in the beginning. And the last thing I wanted to say was, uh, uh, Mayor Shlong, you said, had said that, uh, it was a year and a half ago, that you said that you were not going to approve any more change orders unless something came in, in writing. And, uh, having been, uh, owner of a preschool, uh, one of our, um, um, rules is that, uh, you want to know how many times your kid knows, uh, uh, you, you really mean it now? Is count how many times it takes them to do it. So if they'd come back 10 times and you meant it the first time, then you should have followed through the first time. But I really, really appreciate you asking for that. It's wonderful.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, bring it back to the council.
I move to approve Resolution 2011-01.
I'll second that.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Councilmember Shlong?
Yes.
Councilmember Enya?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. Motion carries, uh, four to one. Okay, thank you. So now we'll move to item number 11. Consider and adopt Resolution 2011-02 entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, implementing a pre-tax payroll deduction plan for service credit purchases. Uh, Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Slert and members of the council, this is kind of an outgrowth of that last item. Uh, during the three group negotiations that we have completed over this last year, with each of those groups, one of the elements that was approved was to allow the employees to, at their own expense, purchase service credit through the California Public Employees Retirement System, CALPERS, that allows them to enhance their pension allowance once they retire, and to make those purchases from their own funds on a pre-tax basis. This is something that CALPERS allows for. Um, and it basically, if you're a city employee, you're interested in this program, you contact CALPERS, give them your age, your estimated retirement date, your years of service. They calculate how much it would cost you to buy each year of service, up to a maximum of five years. And you actually can do this all online now, and it's a fairly simple process. But again, it's all at the employees' expense. One option that you have, you can just write a check if you want. Let's say it's, you know, you want to buy five years and it's $8,000 a year. If you've got $40,000 available, you can pay for it in a lump sum upfront. But you can also pay for it over time through a payroll deduction. And what this does is, uh, make use of a provision in the IRS law that allows employees to pay for that extra service time on a pre-tax basis through payroll deductions. Again, no cost to the city at all. The city is not paying for the enhanced retirement benefit. Employees paying for it. But the city has to, uh, adopt this resolution saying that we will allow our employees to do this on a pre-tax basis. So, um, the council, through the negotiations process, you agree that this would be acceptable to, to include in the employee, employee agreements. And now that we have all of these agreements done, we're finally coming back to you and saying, "Okay, we want this resolution approved." And, uh, not sure how many employees will take advantage of it. Probably not a huge number, but it is a nice little, uh, feature for them to enhance their retirement planning, uh, at no cost to the city.
At their cost.
At their cost, yeah. So we're, uh, recommending that the council adopt the resolution as presented.
Counsel, questions, clarifications?
I have two quick questions, Rod. Is there a minimum retirement age from the city? Can you retire after five years, or?
Yeah, the basic, uh, bottom line on PERS is you have to have five years of service to be vested, and you have to be 50 years old, 50 years of age or older.
Okay, and so, uh, my question is, um, for those that take advantage of this, does that allow them to retire early? Or does it just allow them to?
It doesn't change the 50, the minimum threshold of 50 years old. Now, if I, it depends on how you kind of answer, or how I interpret your question. It could allow someone to retire earlier than they might have otherwise planned, because they have purchased this extra service credit.
So they could retire at 50 instead of 55?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
All right.
Any other questions from council? Public comment?
Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the council for, uh, an action.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution Number 2011-02.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, and, um, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, motion carries unanimous, five to nothing. I would just offer also, for clarification, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Morrison left, uh, but she had, uh, suggested that the department heads, uh, had received, uh, raises previously. And, and the facts are, this council has not, uh, approved any raises for department heads. What it approved a year, a year and a half ago was, uh, a, a policy regarding, uh, raises. So I think it was important to clarify that. There have been no raises for department heads. It's a policy that was established that actually ends up helping, uh, save, uh, expenses for the city ultimately, so.
And it is, it is true that the management employees group did come to agreement quickly last summer, but that had to do with just the specifics of that negotiating process rather than, you know, management's desire to, you know, give them something that the other groups weren't getting. There, there were some things that bogged down this particular group, and, you know, we eventually got that resolved, so.
He has a name.
Okay, thank you.
Negotiator.
Uh, number, item, agenda number 12, we'll consider the appointment of Mr. Joseph Aliotti, uh, to the Crescent City Planning Commission. Mr. Butler?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Joseph, why don't you stand up and come over to the microphone? So we can all see. And by the way, is it Aliotti, Aliati?
Aliotti.
Aliotti, yes. Um, hello, members of the board, I'm Joseph Aliotti, um, president of Crescent City. And, um, just wanted to offer to join the planning commission and, um, anything that you guys need. Uh, if you have any questions for me, uh, I'd be happy to answer them right now.
Uh, I, I would offer that I, I, uh, read your letter of intent, which I thought was actually very well stated, and I appreciated that. And I noticed you've been, uh, tracking the council meetings very consistently, uh, the last several months, and I appreciate that participation. Is there any questions on the part of the council?
Have you finished reading the general plan yet?
I have. Quite extensive.
Ms. Shlong?
Uh, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Butler, uh, did we have multiple candidates?
I believe we had three that I'm aware of, and we did, and Joseph was actually the first one to submit his application during this round. And we did review all three. Um, I asked Mr. Taylor to kind of do the initial review, since he will be the lead staff liaison, and, uh, he recommended at this time, uh, Mr. Aliotti. So that would be staff's recommendation, if the council concurs.
I, I was just going to offer, maybe it'd be worthwhile for the city to maintain those other applicants, uh, on file, in case there's a vacancy in the future that we're not aware of, uh, that we would have those people, uh, to initiate some dialogue with.
Sure, maybe that.
So any questions on the part of the council? Any public comment? Mr. Roberts?
Kirk Roberts, I live in the city, chairman of the planning commission. Glad to have you on board. I know there are other applicants. I think in the past, we have had an alternate, uh, although there was no specific mechanism or language for an alternate. I think we should have that, uh, as a matter of course, uh, to fill in at meetings when we only have two or three people in town, uh, to fill in when someone gets moved to a higher position.
You miss me? Do you miss me?
No. We haven't had a meeting since you left. Next week, we'll miss you.
I think you followed up with that.
So I, I would just make that recommendation that you think about how the mechanics of setting that up on a formal basis, because...
Kirk, why don't you work with the city manager?
We've discussed it. Not in any great length, but I think...
Bring, I mean, some kind of documentation with information back to the council for consideration.
I think that'd be valuable, because, uh, it seems like, uh, at different, uh, times in the past, that the planning commissions end up, uh, shortchanged in, in personnel and a bit of a juggling act. So to the degree we had alternates in place would be valuable.
You have to think too about what that requires, what's required of that person, because you don't want someone that just is labeled an alternate, and then they just show up twice a year and they don't know what's going on.
Well, that's, sir, that's a concern. Maybe we need a file of active candidates maintained. I know when I first came on, I came on as an alternate, I think behind Rich before he went the first time. Geez, within 30 days, I had been elevated. So.
Very good.
Thank you.
I don't anticipate any openings in the near future. We have time to think about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to the council for, uh...
Move to approve appointment of Joseph Aliotti to the planning commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it's unanimous, five to nothing. Mr. Aliotti, congratulations and welcome. Get to work. Okay. We'll move now to, uh, city council, um, legislative matters. Mr. Butler, uh, do you have anything offhand?
Yes, uh, we did have one item that, uh, I'll probably have the mayor take the lead on. I think he had the opportunity to actually meet this gentleman in person. And it was something that I hadn't seen done before here, so we went ahead at the mayor's request and put it on the agenda, and, uh, obviously it'll go up to the council's discretion in terms of how you want to proceed. I think this is a gentleman who is applying for a position, an executive staff position in the new administration. Robert Trinner?
Trinner.
Trinner?
Trinner. And he is a candidate for the Director of California Department of Fish and Game. And, um, actually, I think I'll just let Mr. Slert tell the story of how he, I think he was, he visited Crescent City recently and met with some residents, and was asking for, uh, elected officials to support his candidacy.
That's true, thank you, Mr. Butler. Um, Mr. Trinner, um, I've had the pleasure to meet and converse with on the phone several times over the years. And, uh, I know that the Board of Supervisors here in Del Norte has worked with, uh, Mr. Trinner in the past, uh, fairly extensively, as he was, um, a key member of the Board of Fish and Game. Uh, he's, uh, by background, uh, is a biologist, uh, with a bachelor's and a master's degree from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. And, um, he, he's been practicing since, um, the early 70s. So he's an expert. He's written several papers and documents on, uh, fish, uh, on the, um, in the state of California. Uh, so he's, he's, uh, well-published and, uh, has a very impressive, uh, resume. Uh, he actually had retired and, um, was, I guess, approached by somebody associated with, uh, new Governor Brown's administration, and he said, you know, "I guess I'll consider it." So he's considered to come out of retirement and, uh, to run for, uh, the position of, uh, Director of Fish and Game. So, uh, he had sent a letter to myself. He's also, um, received, I think, already or shortly, a letter of support from, uh, the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors. And I understand the Harbor District is going to be forthcoming with a letter of support. So that's what, uh, I was proposing, that the council consider offering a letter of support to Mr. Trinner. He's, uh, not in the area, but he's intimately familiar with the area because he's, uh, worked here so much in the past, and, uh, I think would represent our community well.
I, I don't know him personally, but I've, uh, heard extensively of him over the years. I'm very involved in our fishing community, um, has come up here to fish for many years. Do you know if this would be replacing Gary Stacey?
I, I think it's, the, the...
Because that would be good.
Because of the new, uh...
When the airport was trying to deal with Fish and Game with, through Gary Stacey, we got next to zero cooperation.
It'd be, it'd be nice to have someone that's familiar with our county. Maybe they can give us a hand with Elk Creek, for one thing, and also, uh, help, help us, uh, maintain what we have.
Very good.
I'm fine with it.
Good. That's correct?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Nice to have some representation.
So this, so this support would be in the form of a letter to the governor's appointment person?
That's correct.
From you.
From the council.
From the council.
Great. Thank you, I appreciate that. Ms. Westfall, did you have anything?
No. No, sounds fine.
Thank you.
Mayor Slert, and speaking of letters of support, I'd like for us all to, also to send a letter of support for the Marine Mammal Center grant application.
I guess I would propose to recuse myself since I've been involved in that project.
But I understand that you were part of the tour guide when the evaluation came up, so...
That's true.
I think that that would be very valuable to the Marine Mammal Center, if we could do that as well.
I'll leave it.
It's not on the agenda, so I mean, is that something?
Neither was this, so...
Yeah, this is on.
Yeah, it is.
It's on here.
Yeah. I don't, can we? I don't remember.
Oh, sorry. It's just a letter, does it have to be on the agenda?
Well, the, am I correct that the Marine Mammal Center grant application is a city application, right? Isn't it?
Yeah.
That's correct.
The city is the lead agency. That was my only question, is would it be redundant for the city council to send a letter?
A letter of support for our grant application?
How about a follow-up letter thanking them for our visit, for the visit up here?
Yeah, I think that could be done at the staff level.
Okay.
Perfect thing for the city manager to accomplish on his own.
Could you do that? Okay.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Butler, any other legislative matters?
Yeah, we're all kind of waiting with bated breath for, I guess it's next Monday, the new governor has to, I don't envy him, but he's got to release his budget proposal. And we're just not sure what's going to have, what the impact could be on local government, especially redevelopment agencies. It's sound, the rumor mill is that they're going to take another shot at trying to squeeze funds out of local RDAs, but other than that, we're not hearing a whole lot. So we'll be tracking it.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll have reports regarding training and/or travel. And I think we'll just go straight to the Madam City Clerk and have her give us a report on her recent League of California City Clerks Conference in Monterey.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As you guys know, I'm going to keep this short, by the way, because I know we're getting record time right now. As you know, I traveled to Monterey to attend the League of California Cities City Clerk Conference. And I'm going to tell you, it was an incredible experience. And Kelly had kind of told me ahead of time that not only was it going to be exceptionally rewarding, but I was going to learn quite a bit. And the networking that I received was just remarkable. And as a matter of fact, of the group of girls that I became kind of close to, one of them's from Truckee, and she is very excited to visit Crescent City. So we're going to have some TOT coming our way. Basically, the conference lasted about three days. It had an all total of eight workshops. I attended every single one of them. Some of them really did not apply to us because we're a general law city. One of the entire workshops was regarding charter cities, which was fine because it's still fascinating. Basically, all the clerks came from different backgrounds, and it was very interesting to see how they came into the role of clerk. I learned quite a bit about the public comment period, and we are incredibly blessed, and that's what I'll tell you about that. They have quite wild experiences. I did pass on some information to Councilmember Enya in regards to that. But other than that, it was just a really wonderful experience. I did learn quite a bit. It was about new laws and the elections. And I've got a wealth of information in my office to pass on to the city. So I'm very glad and thankful for the opportunity.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council reports. Ms. Westphal?
I have a couple of announcements, actually. One is very sad. A relatively new friend, I just found out today, passed away Thursday. His name was James Harvey. I met him at the Senior Center. He's part Indian, he's lived in this area many, many years, and I'll just say I'll miss him a lot. Secondly, New York City Councilman, open debate on fluoride, Peter Valoni Jr., in an effort to save the city seven million dollars, and it seems that he was attacked by the American Council on Science and Health, which is an organization I never heard of before. But the interesting thing about that is that it's headed up by Elizabeth Wayland, who actually defended dioxin, the most toxic chemical industry ever unleashed on society. So those are my two announcements.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Shlong?
Love my free time, thank you. Just two things, the monitor on here tonight still states, myself is the mayor, so if whoever does that can change it.
I think she did last meeting, which is strange because we talked about it the last meeting, and she...
I just noticed it when I sat down this evening.
Details.
Details. Other than that, it's been a quiet few weeks, had a wonderful, quiet holiday at home, and my son turned fifteen three days before Christmas. And I just wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I hope two thousand eleven is a lot less controversial than two thousand ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Enya?
The only thing, I'm still working on that public comment, Miss Patch brought me some more information, and I'm working with the city attorney, Mr. Black, so hopefully we'll have it for the agenda next time.
Great. Ms. Murray?
Well, you heard about the good news from the Local Transportation Commission giving us that money for Front Street. And I'm now on the Redwood Coast Transit Authority Commission, and we voted to approve a brand-new radio system proposal, so they'll have, they'll be having new radios. So that, I thought that that was kind of a good news for them. And they'll also be, we'll be getting more Greyhound service coming very, very soon. So that's another good thing for our community, so we'll be hearing more about that soon.
You know, actually, thanks, thanks for, I was at that meeting with Mrs. Murray. There'll be more connections from Redwood Coast Transit to Arquita to connect with four different times during the day and night to Greyhound. So it seems the government, the federal government, wants more public transportation. And so now they're funding that. If Greyhound can't make it all the way up here, commuter buses, I call them, will be the feeder buses to do that. So...
Very good.
It may be possible to travel all over the country in a bus again.
That's, that's positive. Very good.
That's really good for...
Thank you. I'm actually glad to say I don't have much to report on. I've been battling sickness for a couple of weeks here, and I'm glad to be back to the living. So with that, we'll adjourn this regular city council meeting, and we're going to reconvene in closed session. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday instead of Monday, January the eighteenth, starting at 5:00 PM with closed session. Thank you.